But we can hear you.
Okay, you're good to go.
We have the light shining right on you. Are we good? Welcome. I'm Barb Noseworthy, Mayor of the City of Durango, and this is our June 20th City Council meeting. We will start with a roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Bossmans.
Present.
Counselor Buell.
Here.
Mayor Protem Youssef.
Here.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present. May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Mayor, they have not shown up yet.
Okay, I will start with the meeting, and when we come back in after executive session, perhaps we can bring the translator in.
Sounds good.
At that time, at that time. So I will start with an land acknowledgement. This is my statement. It does not reflect the statement of council, but I do want to acknowledge some history. So for thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Ninchu, Nucha, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government, and it is therefore imperative to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. We'll move on to, and Tom, if the translator does show up, please let me know at any point, and I will break to introduce that person. Identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a perceived or actual conflict of interest? I will speak. At the last meeting, I identified a potential conflict of interest around the animus view of condominiums and the public participation. At the time, I thought my HOA, in which I own a piece of property, was it would be involved in that. It is a separate developer, a separate transaction, and so now I am just a neighbor. So I will be participating in this discussion as well. Thank you. So now we'll go to public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. And I see we have one person publicly in the room, Mr. Turner. Would you like to come up and speak, please? Come to you. You will have three minutes, and we will hopefully have a clock going. If not, I will check it. Yes, please. They're not? Okay, do I, if I speak closer?
All that last speech.
You still can't hear me on the microphone? Okay. Mr. Turner, please go ahead.
Hello. My name is Larry Turner. I live at 636 County Road 207, which is Lightner Creek Road. I want to thank the council and staff for allowing me to come talk to you. We have property that adjoins the city's bicycle trails in Twin Buttes. After this fire and talking with the fire marshal, I am looking for an emergency egress through the city's property. There is a wagon road that went to the old ghost town that the city opened up for the firefighters to go over the other side of Perrins and the hot shots and such as that, and they also use my access. That's a little bit closer. All I'm looking for is a possible lifesaving escape route. And so the road goes right to our property. I've got permission from the Division of Wildlife to go through their gate, which is right there. I've got permission from the Twin Buttes subdivision that give me a key to their gate so I can get out. And so we're, no, we are looking to just, it's just an emergency exit. And the fire marshal advised me that if I could get that, it would be very much to my benefit because we have 33 acres. Our driveway is a half a mile long, and it's right up above, right behind the buttes, basically. And so with the road being already in place, having it open for the firefighters and policemen and such for the fire, I see that it's of no harm for the city to go ahead and, you know, okay that for me to be able to exit because my family, you know, will be there and over the course of time and such as that. Now, that last fire that went from Lightner Creek and then jumped over to Perrins and burnt the ghost town remnants, that was quite the shocker. It was right there. It burnt trees that we could see. And so the Department of Parks and Wildlife and the subdivision have both given us permission. I, in the process of all of this back a month or so ago, I had contacted Kevin Hall. And and let's see, what was the other one's name? Anyway, about doing that. And, oh, Mark Williams, Kevin Hall, Mark Williams, on this matter, and they said the city was not interested in investigating it. Now, the reason that strikes a chord with me, when they opened the trails and bicycle paths up there, I had bicyclers encroaching on my property on a consistent, regular basis. They made one of their trails as close to my property boundary as you could get. And so we went round and round a little bit. The Division of Wildlife had problems. And finally, I convinced them that least put up signage. And if that didn't work, then we'd talk about doing a fence.
So Mr. Turner, your time has been up for a bit of time now.
All right, I'm sorry. I don't have a clock in front of me, so.
Not used to looking for it. Let me say that the city manager's here. He's heard, we've heard you. And the community development's here. We don't resolve anything at this stage, but you have been heard.
I have been heard. All right. Now, can I give the council some photographs of the?
You're welcome to distribute anything you would like, but thank you.
And I put my addresses on the rear. I guess just hand them like this?
Yes, thank you.
And yeah, I put my address, phone number, and such as that. And, you know, any response would be greatly appreciated at this point.
Thank you.
And sorry, I overran my time.
No worry. You're not the first. Is there anyone else in the public that did not sign up that had wished to speak? We will be going into proclamations as well. And then, Tom, can you tell us if anyone virtual has raised their hand?
No one has, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will close public participation at this time. We are scheduled on the calendar to go into an executive session, but if council would permit me, I'd like to do our proclamation now because our person to receive it is here and would not like to keep them waiting. So is there any objection to going into proclamations? Okay, let's do that. Lynn Westburg, will you please? I'm going to pass this down. Will you please come on up to the podium? So first of all, thank you for reaching out with this and bringing it to our awareness of this opportunity. So let me start here. This is a proclamation on creating connections. Whereas social psychologists define loneliness as the gap between the social connections you would like to have and those you feel you experience, and the proclamation cites Harvard Magazine and the loneliness pandemic. And whereas 36% of all Americans, including 61% of young adults and 51% of mothers with young children, feel serious loneliness and loneliness overall has increased substantially since the outbreak of the global pandemic. This also cites a Harvard Education Report. Whereas loneliness increases the risk of depression, anxiety, and substance abuse, as well as seemingly unrelated physical ailments like heart disease, stroke, hypertension, cancer, and even infectious disease. Whereas Dr. Vivek Murthy, Surgeon General, called loneliness a public health epidemic. A national organization such as the Foundation for Social Connection and Far From Alone will host conversations on belonging, connection, and well-being on June 15th at the US Capitol Visitor Center. Whereas Dr. Vivek Murthy, Surgeon General, observed the serious effects of loneliness during his years in private practice and now advocates for restructuring our lives around people instead of work productivity and social media. Whereas Creating Connections, a subcommittee of Citizens Health Action Coalition, has been making efforts to foster connection in various ways for the last five years in simple gestures such as a smile at every person you pass or call an isolated elder or more broadly, host a potluck for your neighborhood. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Noseworthy, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June as Creating Connections Month. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? Please step to the microphone. And then you'll sign this. Yes, right here.
Okay, I didn't know I had a chance to speak, so I don't have anything prepared. Probably lucky for you, since this is my soapbox issue. But my name is Lynn Westburg. I'm a retired public health nurse and public health administrator. And we actually started talking about this issue shortly after I retired, which was now 11 years ago. So I think people hear this, that loneliness is not good for you, that it truly can affect your mental and physical health. I think we still don't think it's that important. It's just a feeling, right? A lot of people think you just ought to be able to get over it by yourself. I mean, you're tough. We're tough out here in the West. But I think COVID gave us all a little dose of loneliness. And those people who were somewhat lonely before COVID or those people who spent a lot of time alone and isolated during COVID are having a lot of problems reconnecting. Some of us are just so happy to get back to normal life. Other people are a little frightened and insecure about how to get reconnected. And I think we can all help. Our little group is totally volunteer. We have no money. And we thought we need a lot of help on this issue. So essentially, we're asking the community to just kind of think about your neighborhood, about your block, about your little classes, your little groups, and who might be in need of a little help. Who can you invite over for a cup of coffee or a glass of wine? Or can you have a little neighborhood gathering? Or can you just have a walk group together? Anything? I mean, it's, the possibilities are as broad as everyone's imagination. So we just need your help. It's a very big job for a very small group with no money. So we appreciate the support of the city in proclaiming this and ask all of you in the room, of course, to take a little step, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Westburg. On that note, we will move to our executive session, and we will need a vote to go into executive session. And this is for the purpose of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters specifically to discuss an appointment to the position of library director as permitted in CRS 24-6402-FI-FET. Do we have a motion? Thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's have the roll call or the vote call, please.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef.
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Yes. We will now move into executive session.
Finance conference.
Hey, Ben, both translators are here so they can do the announcement after they come back from executive session. Hey, Ben, can you hear me? Did you hear what I said about translators? They're ready to go when they come back from executive session. Translators are ready when counselors come back from executive session. Do you have your personal cellphone?
If you're talking to the mic there at the podium, Ben, we can hear you.
You just want me to let you know when they come back in?
No, if you could tell Barbara translators are ready when she comes back.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right. I'll remind her that. I saw them pop on there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, can't hear you very well.
After being in the finance room.
Mayor, if you can hear me, we do have translators available now.
Okay, thank you. I will. Oh. Very willing. Yeah, okay, I'm good there. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I thought Melissa was here. Sorry. I'll wait. No problem. My apologies. I looked over and I, oh, yeah, he's here. I know, I know. Okay, now we'll do this. Thank you. For the record, council met in executive session for the purpose of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters specifically to discuss an appointment to the position of library director as permitted in CRS 24-6402-FI-FET. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objection now. Seeing none, the next item is discussion and possible action concerning appointment of the library director for the city of Durango. Do we have a motion? Oh, first of all, please discuss, yes.
Absolutely, thank you. Mayor and council, we have Erin Hyder, our Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services. Just to give a little bit of a background on the candidate, Luke Alvey Robertson for library director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Erin Hyder, Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services. It is my pleasure to talk a little bit about our search process for our library director here for the city of Durango. After a national search, we generated and received over 40 applicants, went through a very lengthy and competitive interview and search process. We had finalists on site approximately two weeks ago and with that, with a full day of interview activities. With that, Luke Alvey Henderson is currently the library director at Moore Memorial Public Library in Texas City, Texas, and would be coming to us for about four years of director experience. And I don't want him to speak, three years of assistant director experience and at that library. With that, we're asking council to support the city manager's recommendation With that, we're asking council to support the city manager's recommendation to appoint Luke Alvey Henderson as our next library director.
Thank you. Any discussion among council?
I'd make a motion that we support the hiring of the library director as mentioned by Ms. Heider.
Last second, thank you. Last opportunity for discussion. I'll just give a big thank you to Erin and Jose and the staff who handled this interview process. I'm thrilled with the quality of people you've been selecting. On that, we'll have a vote.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. We look forward to welcoming Luke and to meeting him.
Make sure it'll be here at the next council meeting whenever he's here, the council meeting starting after his first date.
So I, I believe I missed the translator, please forgive me. Can we have the introduction of our translator, please?
Mayor, we have B Torres, who's ready to do the introduction.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, my name is B Torres and I'm here with my colleague Diego and we are here with the Community Language Cooperative and I want to thank you all for your commitment to language justice. Language justice means that we all have the right to speak and be heard in the language of our hearts. Therefore, Diego and I will be providing simultaneous interpretation from English to Spanish for tonight's meeting. For those of you attending on Zoom, once I finish speaking, we will activate the interpretation function and at that time, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, you will see a globe icon with interpretation. Please click on that icon and select either English or Spanish as the language of your heart. I want to remind the council members to please speak at a conversational pace so that Diego and I are able to provide an accurate rendition of your message. Should you have any issues with the interpretation function, for those of you attending on Zoom, please raise your hand so that we can address them and try to move forward with the meeting. Thank you so much. Hola buenas tardes, yo soy Vitorres y estoy aquí con mi colega Diego por parte de la cooperativa comunitaria del lenguaje. Les agradecemos a ustedes su compromiso a la justicia del lenguaje, que significa que todos tenemos el derecho de hablar y ser escuchados en el idioma de nuestro corazón. Para ustedes quienes están aquí a través de Zoom, en un momento activaremos esa función de interpretación y en ese momento en la parte inferior de su pantalla de Zoom, usted va a ver un icono de globo terráqueo. A favor de hacer clic en ese icono y elija inglés o español como el idioma de su corazón. En cuanto, si tienen cualquiera su problema con interpretación, por favor use la función de levantar la mano para poder arreglar el asunto. Les recuerdo que por favor hablen a un ritmo de conversación para poder brindar una interpretación precisa de su mensaje. Muchas gracias, ya podemos comenzar. Thank you very much. We can go ahead and begin and activate the interpretation function.
Thank you so much. I believe next on the agenda is 7.2 city operational updates.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have a few operational updates. I'm gonna do a couple here and then I'm gonna pass it over to Cynthia Snead, our finance director, for an announcement and update as well as Chief Brammer. Just in general updates, first, the city has enacted stricter fire restrictions based on the current fire danger. We also canceled the fireworks display for Independence Day in favor of a drone show. On a related note, the city-sponsored wildlife mitigation efforts began on June 14th with the first area to be treated located on Ball Lane, just up Florida Road. Staff held an open house recently last week at City Hall for the 2023 budget. The presentation is available on the city's YouTube channel for viewing. Parks and Recreation staff met last Thursday with the public at 32nd Street and East 2nd Avenue to describe the landscaping plans along the Animus River Trail Extension. And the city's Movies in the Park series is underway at Buckley Park and will last until August 29th. On July 29th, we will be showing in Kanto and Spanish with English subtitles. With that, I will hand it over to Cynthia Snead, our finance director, to discuss the recent award that we received on our comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors. Very pleased to announce that last week we received notification from the GFOA that we received the award. And I want to read a little blurb about describing what the award is all about. It's designed to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare the annual financial, comprehensive financial report that evidenced the spirit of transparency and full disclosure and then recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. So that's what it's all about. The press release says the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the city of Durango for its comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2020. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. So just want to talk for just a quick second about what makes it comprehensive, but you know, it's comprehensive is in the title. In addition to the basic financial statements, there are analysis and other items upon the front part of the report and at the back is a very robust statistical information, statistical section that gives ten years of history on a number of things, so for comparative purposes to other governments and whatnot. So that's what makes it comprehensive. It's more than just the financial statements, it's got the other pieces and parts. So I want to give a huge shout out and a huge thanks to all of the central finance staff. Every in and every day in and out, they are processing transactions of all different sorts and it's the result of all of those transactions that land in this report to demonstrate our financial health. So a big shout out to them. This is definitely a team effort, no one person does it by themselves, so.
Thank you, congratulations. Council, do you have any questions or comments to Cynthia or Jose?
Congratulations and to your staff also.
Yes, a huge congratulations and what a amazing turnaround that our finance department and staff have done. Thank you so much.
You're here.
We have been under continuous audit since before I arrived. Some of my staff have been doing it for much longer than that, so it's it's nice that things are finally winding down into a normal pace.
Wonderful, thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you, Cynthia, congratulations. And then lastly, we do have Chief Brammer for an announcement about our ABLE program. That's a really cool program that the Durango Police Department has been awarded with and I think it's going to be a tremendous accomplishment for our PD and Chief Brammer.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Bob Brammer, the chief of police of City Durango. And it's my pleasure to announce that the Durango Police Department has been accepted into the ABLE program. ABLE stands for Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement. It was first started up as a program that came out of New Orleans after their descent decree by Georgetown University and it's an opportunity and an ability to bring in outside instructors to certify some of our officers to be instructors in this particular area. Basically, it's a peer intervention program that we teach skills to every officer regardless rank to be able to intervene in career-saving opportunities at any given time if there's inappropriate behavior that's out there. It's, we had to get community support in order to generate this application process and then go through the rigorous application process as well as they screened us to see if we were going to the core values and the competencies that they were looking for to steward this program. Those community support functions that we got were forced, local four-star community, Los Copineros and the Pastoral Society, which is a group of pastors from local churches around the area. And they're there to help keep us on track to make sure that we're abiding by the high standards ABLE sets forth. Also, another initiative that's going along with this is this program is being sponsored by the state of Colorado as well and they want to do as a statewide initiative. There's only a handful of agencies across the state that have been accepted into this program right now. At that point post, which is our standardization and training board, has looked at us as a model for our region and once our officers are trained, we're going to be utilizing those officers to train other departments within the region within the southwest part of Colorado to ensure that this program is successful as well, so.
Thank you. Questions, comments for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you for the outstanding community service that all of your staff and officers do. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
That concludes my city operational update. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just add, we heard that you gave a talk at the GFOA to a huge audience and appreciate you representing Durango.
My pleasure, absolutely. It is always good to be able to get the story out for the city of Durango. All of it is not possible without the support of the city council, so thank you all for your support and challenging the staff to continue to reach new heights, so thank you.
Wonderful. Next, we're up to the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Item 8.1 is approval of minutes from June 7th, 2022 for the city council study session. Item 8.2 is also approval of minutes of the June 7th, 2022 city council, city council regular meeting. Items 8.3 through 8.5 are discussion and possible action items. 8.3 is regarding an appointment to the Historic Preservation Board. 8.4 is for the approval of a resolution authorizing the Durango Police Department to accept citizen donations. And 8.5 is discussion and possible action regarding the Aspen Point Townhomes final as-is built plat. And then lastly, item 8.6 is the final reading of ordinance O 2022-19, amending portions of the Three Springs Codes and Standards related to Section 3.2 parking requirements and declaring an effective date.
Does any council wish to remove any item?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 8.4, please.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items without 8.4?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef, would you like to talk about 8.4?
Yes, I'd like to start first by talking with Dirk and/or our city. The item 8.4 is the subject is the discussion and possible action for approval of a resolution authorizing the Durango Police Department to accept citizen donations. And I'd like to first start about seeking staff support on discussing about police departments accepting donations and that process around that, please.
Sure, I'll give Chief Brammer an opportunity to talk a little bit more on the specifics of it, but donations to police departments are something that are quite common in municipalities. Usually they go to things from drug dogs to horses to computer equipment, things that are, you know, really good, nice to haves and not necessarily things that we're able to budget for. So when those opportunities come from nonprofit organizations or private individuals, it is a common practice for the police department to take that as a gift to the department and organization or donation, not to an individual. And I believe that's really where we would like to make sure we draw the line there, just to make sure of conflict of interests. With that, I have let Dirk know about the concern that we did receive about it. We do have a code of ethics that we are, that we are bound by and there wasn't a perceived conflict of interest with this, but I'll also let Chief Brammer kind of address some of the specificity of this donation.
Good evening, Chief Brammer, Durango Police. Again, this is a program that's nonprofit, this wanting to donate in enhancing the core team. They saw the recent, I guess, article that we did with the Durango Herald with the launch of the core team and the vehicle that was supporting that effort with them. There was an organization out there that was Mary Bono, a former Congresswoman, that was also part of the nonprofit Mothers Against Prescription Drug Abuse. She saw that run through the Herald and our social media pages, thought that this nonprofit could enhance that program as well. And so when she came to me and approached me and asked if there was going to be an ability for our organization to further the mission of the Durango Police Department, our core team, to extend services out to the community, we felt there would be an outstanding partnership. Her intent behind that was to further the ability for the core team who's reaching out to people in crisis to deal with people either have prescription drug crisis or addictions or opioid addiction as well. And one of the things that they're looking for us to do is to take like these, this is a drug disposal kit, if you're not familiar with it, and they have basically partnered with this organization to take unwanted medications or illicit drugs, build, put it in here, there's a pack in there with instructions and it'll actually destroy it right then and there. And individual people can then dispose of those unwanted medications or illicit narcotics by themselves versus waiting for us to further potentially, you know, our drug takeout back program, which we do twice a year and we're really the only outlet within the community to be able to do that. This would give us the ability to distribute these throughout the area through the use of the core team and our patrol officers. So that's just one example of that. In the past, we've also had opportunities where we've received donations from the community when we did have a K-9 unit. You know, we've got a recent donation that's also on the table as well that they saw the success of our drone program, which is kind of the next step from our drug or K-9 program, which has then gone to technology to be able to help more safely capture people who are committing crimes, search for people could potentially have Alzheimer's, lost kids or whatever, we can use that technology, we're actually works better than a dog itself and she thought that was really neat, so she's donating that to expand our drone program as well. And these are programs, again, that like Jose's mentioned, are propagated throughout the United States and it's for a specific program to enhance that capability within the agency. It does not go to a specific individual officer at all.
Excellent. Thank you so much for clarifying that for council and for the community. I think it's important that we clarify it and I, and I had originally just wanted to pull this because I wanted to thank the nonprofit and that contributed to the program as well as the Durango citizens. I just think it's further reinforcement of the benefits to the programming that the DPD is doing to our community and for individuals. I think it reinforces that, you know, the work that we're doing is helping and and it's helping keeping our community safe while at the same time simultaneously helping vulnerable populations. So I just wanted to thank you also, the DPD, for your efforts and those who have contributed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this before we call for a motion? Is there a motion to approve 8.4?
So moved.
I'll second.
Let's have the vote. Oh, discussion, sorry, forgot that again.
I just wanted to say once again, thank you for the community service that your team provides, chief, and I love the fact that the community recognizes it and appreciates it too. Thank you.
And I'll add in a thank you to the police department, but also to the community for being so generous. And I might also add that we might even have to look at whether or not we need some kind of, I was looking at Dirk and whether or not we need some kind of auxiliary way to collect support if this becomes an ongoing thing and I wanted to get your thoughts.
We, Chief and I and Jose have talked about that idea. At some communities, there's auxiliary or friends of the police or something like that that allows for the donation directly to that organization. So I think historically there have been a few of these. If they warrant, we will certainly take a look at doing that.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Great. All right, we'll move on to item 11. This will be, the city council previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearings for each of the hearings listed below. The following proposed ordinance or topics have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues dealt within this section of the agenda are legislative or policy nature. As this is a virtual meeting, the procedure for public hearings has been adjusted to contribute to a public hearing. What we'll do is I'll see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes, once we get, we called for the opening, the public hearing and then I will check to see if there's anyone virtually who wishes to speak. So the first item is a public hearing to consider an easement for charter communications for the installation of an underground filter optic line to service the Asperal Apartments. And I think, who's speaking on that? Marcus? Oh, Bryce, excuse me, sorry. Oh, Bryce, excuse me, sorry.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Uh, I hope this is gonna be a straightforward uh presentation.
You sharing it?
Yep. Yep. Thanks, man. Thanks.
No, no.
Out to everybody. Perfect. All right. So yeah, this is a a request from Charter Communications for an easement. This is a context map showing the point of beginning here on the north side of Avenida del Sol. Um, we approved another fiber optic line with Charter Communications earlier this year that ran along the north side here. Um, but now the green line illustrates where the new fiber optic line will go. Um, this is gonna be via bore. Um, so there won't be any interference with the street here that it crosses. Um, but comes up the to the end of Avenida del Sol and supplies the new Aspero Apartments um with uh upgraded service speeds. That is it. This is the actual proposed easement, if any of you like this view better. And then, yeah, I'll open it to questions. Um, but yeah, here's my recommended motion. Yeah, I'll ask if you guys have any questions about it before we.
Actually, since this is a public hearing, correct? Yes. So we will, what I will do is open it up to the public and then open it up to council for questions based on what the feedback they hear from the public. And if anyone from the anyone that you've been working with, the partners need to speak, we can open that up as well. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? Is, Tom, is there anyone who's raised their hand uh virtually to speak on this topic as part of the public hearing?
There is not, Mayor.
All right, I will close this portion of the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions? We have the recommended motion in front of you. Bryce, is it a way to move that so people can see the full motion? There we go. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the Charter Communications easement across city on property along Avenida del Sol for a new fiber optic line to service the newest sparrow apartments as depicted in the attached documentation and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance authorizing the granting of this easement for a first reading at a regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let us vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Okay, second item is eleven point one point two. A public hearing to consider an easement for Fast Track Communications for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service the Hillcrest Golf Course. Bryce, I believe you're still on board.
That's right. All right. So yes, this is another easement request. This is from Fast Track. And to be clear, this is uh work that has already been performed last year. Um, and uh Fast Track reached out to us uh retroactively, and so this is granting an easement for work that has already been done. Uh, and here this illustrates the route. It was a long view. Um, so the top of this, uh, the point of beginning, there's a substation uh just west of Aspen Drive. It comes down a little bit, crosses up onto the ridgeline, and then runs behind all of the developments that run on the east side of Florita Road. And then it will cross Rim Drive, and it runs along city property here where um it's the right of way between the the golf course fence and Rim Drive here. Um, and then it stops at the roundabout that connects to Gay Line Gulch. And then you can see it jogs back a little bit. They have a a maintenance shop down here. Um, so it's serviced to that maintenance shop that had been isolated from the clubhouse previously.
Great. I will open this portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this topic? Tom, is there anyone in on the virtual who has raised their hand?
There is not.
Since there is no part, public participation, I'll close this portion of the public, this public hearing and open it up to council for questions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Fast Track Communications easement across city-owned property from the substation adjacent to Aspen Drive to Rim Drive for a new fiber optic line to service the Hillcrest Golf Course as depicted in the attached documentation and directed, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance authorizing the granting of this easement for a first reading at a regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second.
Discussion? Let's have the vote.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Thank you. All right, eleven point one point three. A hub, a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing three ground leases with Asher Aviation Group LLC at the airport. Dan Murray?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Counselor Daniel Murray presenting on behalf of Tony DiPari, and uh Mr. Nelson's also gonna help me with that this evening. All right. So, I wanna make this it's a PDF, so may just stay with those views, but I Okay, so this is a public hearing. It's a two-part item for you this evening, first being a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing three ground leases with Asher Aviation Group, who is present this evening, should you have questions at the DRO Airport. So Asher Aviation submitted a ground lease application and preliminary development proposal to the, to construct three non-commercial aeronautical aircraft hangars, and these are E four, E five, and E six within the DRO North General Aviation Complex last fall of twenty, actually. The Airport Commission approved the preliminary proposal in November of twenty twenty meeting. The proposed hangar development would occur in the northeastern portion of the General Aviation Apron Complex. The hangars are approximately sixty-five by fifty, and the next slide will show you those uh dimensions and placement. Adhering to the airport hangars development process, the developer has subsequently submitted both an FAA airspace review and environmental review. They've submitted construction plans to the airport review. Airport staff has reviewed the construction plans and found them to be compatible with the airport land use designations, airport protections, utility alignment, DRO hangar construction standards, and airport layout plan. The next step for the development process is the execution of the ground leases this evening for your consideration. Um, those will be three separate motions. So here we are in the northern site, northern edge of the airport, and the proposed hangars would fit in between the two ex- uh, three existing, and then there's a bookend there with the redder roof. Uh, this is a site plan and rendering of the proposed building. You'll notice what it has in the packet is that these this area was contemplated for four hangars, but these are slightly wider hangars to accommodate larger aircraft. So the depth of the aircraft um hangars remains the same to keep the alignment setback, but they've just gotten wider. So the lease terms are a thirty-year base term with one five-year conditional option. This term is consistent with airport lease leasing guidelines established throughout the published leasing policy. The base ground rent is thirty-three cents per square foot annually with a resulting initial annual base rent of two thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars per hangar. Rent is consistent with the published airport rates and charges. And there is a consumer price index adjustment of the base rent every two years. And water and sanitary sewer tap fees are consistent with the published airport rates and charges. And I believe the next slide or it's in your packet that puts those at about three thousand each. Uh, the benefits of the airport are stable, long-term ground rental income, increased aeronautical use of the northern GA Apron Complex, ongoing fuel flowage revenue, positive impact to DRO-based aircraft count, and a regional economic impact. The airport layout plan depicts um fifty by fifty. I mentioned typically that's what the preceding hangars were. In this case, they're proposing slightly wider uh hangars to accommodate larger aircraft. Asher Aviation Group has completed the required FAA airspace environmental reviews. The location and extent application, including this hangar layout, was approved by the county in early twenty twenty-two. Final building code review would be completed also through the county building permitting process. The Airport Advisory Commission has reviewed the proposed ground lease agreements and unanimously recommended their approval during its May meeting. And the city attorney has reviewed the draft lease agreements, which are in the second piece of your packet this evening. The fiscal impact is um positive ground rent from each of the proposed leases of roughly two thousand three hundred thirty-seven-six dollars annually as well as future rental adjustments based on CPI as part of the lease agreements. The water and sewer tap fees of three thousand each would be assessed to each hangar. And additionally, providing long-term ground rental income to the airport. Execution of proposed ground leases will produce ongoing revenue through aviation fuel flowage fees, increased base aircraft count at DRO and facilitate regional economic impact. So the recommended recommendation for staff for this piece is to do the public hearing as we are now. Consider any public comment, and then you uh as on your agenda under items twelve point one, two, and three, will be able to take action on the ordinance and leases.
Thank you. And if you leave that up there on the screen, that would be helpful. I will open up public comment on this topic. Is there anyone uh in the room here who wishes to speak? And if there's a representation from Mister from Asher, Will at, not Mister Asher, but from Asher, we will call you up later. So anyone wishing to speak? Tom, is there anyone virtually who's raised their hand?
There is not.
Uh, I'm, I don't have the name of the person. You said there was representation?
Bruce, I believe, right? Oh, you're, okay.
Okay. No, only if you wish to. Okay, so great. Uh, questions from council? Oh, so thank you. I have to close the public hearing. Now that that's done, these formalities. Discussion from council? Questions? Do we have a recommendation of emotions? Okay.
I just want to say that I did, um, I sent to council and staff a um request from Tony DiPari, who's the director of the airport. Um, a question about how the thirty-three cents uh lease rate um square foot annually um compares with comparable airports. And his response was um that it's roughly mid uh mid-market when compared. So the market that we're comparing against is nineteen cents to fifty-one cents. And he mentions that the comparisons are a little inexact since lease terms and quality of build sites at each airport differ, but they provide the general context. And I just wanted to say that given that information, also the uh Airport Board approved this, so I think it's it's
Yeah, I'll just chime in. The Airport Board approved it unanimously, and you know, Tony always comes so prepared with all that documentation for the board, and so we're well informed to you know, make um these these recommendations, so.
It's helpful to hear both of that, your statements. Is there a recommend, a motion?
Do we have to do them all three separately?
We don't need a motion on this.
Yeah, actually, we don't need, because they're they're on the attend, there are three ordinances on the agenda.
That's right. So do we have to do all three ordinances separate? Yes, they're on twelve point one twelve.
We'll do each other, because there's separate leases, we'll do them separately. But that's in another section of the agenda, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item, I just want to figure out who's presenting. This will be Savannah. So next item is a public hearing to consider the River Trail Apartments mixed-use preliminary plan development at Mercury Village Lot Four R A Parcel five six six nine oh five one zero 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 four two and Mercury Village Lot Four R B Parcel five six six nine oh five one zero 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 four three.
Good evening, Council Savannah Lidle Community Development. Share my screen. Think we're in business. Um, this is a proposed River Trail Apartments preliminary plan development at Mercury Village Lot Four R A and Four R B. This, the conceptual plan development came to city council in September, so hopefully this is fairly familiar territory. So this is the Mercury Village Lot Four. It sits just south of the Durango Mall as well as the former Mercury Building. Um, it sits along the river and along the Animus River Trail, hence the name. Um, this is a aerial view of it. Um, the project will straddle that spur to the Animus River Trail that is there. This is the plat map. This came to city council in February of twenty nineteen to subdivide this lot into two lots. The intention of the owner at that time was to sell off the northernmost lot. Um, at, but then what happened is somebody bought both lots and is now gonna consolidate those and come forward with this proposed apartment complex. This is a site plan. It's a um a lot happening here, but essentially it is three buildings. Um, and it will be a mixed-use development. The, um, there is a building one which is southernmost, and that will and will have um thirty-two residential units. Building two in the middle will have four commercial units and then twenty-one residential units. And then building three, northernmost, will have eighteen residential units. This is just the detail of the landscape plan. Uh, one comment and one item that we put in there for conditions is that it is required for every ten parking space that there be a um tree island to help with that heat island effect um and to add a little bit of greenery. Uh, that along with the fact that there are required four ADA accessible parking spaces, and only two are provided. So staff is recommending that the ADA requirement be met as well as the tree islands be added. This means that um depending on the size of those, that the, they will be slightly under their parking requirement. They won't quite meet the parking requirement, but staff was in support of the reduction in this parking to meet the landscape islands as well as the ADA requirement, and Planning Commission was in support of this as well. So this is just a quick detail of the landscape plan. I also wanted to note that this is in the um river corridor overlay zone, and so they are required to have additional landscaping um along the east side to screen this from the river. Really, we want to minimize that impact of development as much as possible from uh the River Trail as well as the river, and so they met those requirements um with this landscaping. So that's what this was intended to show. Again, this is for the um building two and then the full landscape plan. Little hard to read on this, pretty intense. Um, so building one, as mentioned, thirty-two apartments uh per Planning Commission recommendation. They did follow the Mercury Building, the existing building that's there with these long horizontal lines um and flat roofs. Uh, the format and scale is broken up with these various columns in red as well as a variety of materials. Uh, building two is the mixed use. This has twenty-one apartments, and then at the ground floor, a long Mercury Drive will be those four commercial units. Again, a great breakup of the format and scale, really muted, neutral materials and colors that are seen traditionally throughout Durango. And then building three with the eighteen apartments that steps down the slope um as well as you can see it here, a small storage unit that will be landscaped to help minimize that from the Animus River Trail. I have a fly-through which we can look at, um which the applicant provided if we want to see that. Um, comprehensive plan, this was found to meet the comprehensive plan. The future land use map has this designated as mixed use, so this does meet that requirement of um mixed use. And it also meets many of the requirements for infill as well as providing housing. Um, the development patterns, it's consistent with what is around there and the direction that Durango really wants to go. Originally, this planned development in two thousand and twelve came forward with the single uses of office buildings. And this really meets the criteria that Durango has now and the vision it sees. And this really meets the criteria that Durango has now and the vision it sees for itself in providing mixed use and greater housing rather than just individual business offices. Public services.
Right next to it. It's right next to it. But there's some.
Tom?
Sorry.
You're not on mute.
Public services, Mercury Drive, the curb gutter sidewalk have already been built as part of phase one. So that's already in place. So it has the utilities provided for this development and will provide a high quality environment. They'll have amenities along the east side for both the public as well as the residents. Natural hazards, this was reviewed by engineering because it is on that slope. And again, it is so close to the Animus River. So that was highly reviewed. Public comment, this was posted in notice per the land use and development code. And we did have a comment from Durango Mall with the condition that any approval is subject to future modification to reflect any change in Colorado Department of Transportation's approval. In the event the Colorado Department of Transportation deems it appropriate to modify its previous approval. And then the applicant must include signage on its property that noticed by its invitees, contractors, licensees, and department tenants that the mall's property may not be utilized for direct access to the Sawyer Drive signal intersection. The intent of these are to keep the, to not turn the Durango Mall into a road that people would start to really use that parking lot as a road to access Sawyer and back and forth. And so the mall just wanted to ensure that that was made clear. The applicant knows about this and agrees to all of these conditions. And so these will be included as part of the conditions. This does meet the strategic goals for affordability and economic opportunity, providing that additional housing as well as that mixed use component. And really provides that enhanced livability and sense of place. It will be great to see something on these lots south of town to provide these amenities as well as places to live. So recommended approval of the River Trail Preliminary Plan Development with the findings that the plan meets applicable land use and development criteria with the following condition of approval. Future plans middle shall be in general conformance with the approved plan and in compliance with city development standards. All public improvements shall be to city standards. Completion of all required public improvements shall be secured through a public improvements agreement with adequate security provided. All verbal and graphic representations of the applicants or their agents shall be deemed conditions of approval. All agency comments shall be addressed prior to final plan development review. And the landscaping shall meet the land use and development code landscaping requirement for parking lots.
Thank you, Savannah.
Thank you.
I will open a public hearing for any comments related to this project. Anyone in the audience? Tom, is there anyone virtually who has raised their hand?
There is not.
Seeing none, I will close this portion of, well, first of all, let me say while it's still open, is the developer online or wishing to speak?
They are here, but they are just here to answer any questions. They don't have a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close that portion, this portion of the public hearing and open it for questions from council. Please go ahead.
Counselor Bosmans, I think your microphone's muted.
Let's go again. Thank you for that presentation. We run. I, I remember this project coming up a while ago. And the question I had at the time was about the height of the building and what the code requires from the front side as well as from the rear side and how it compares to the Mercury Building. Because it seems that this is quite a tall building if you look at the riverside and that would probably impact the view. Can you remind me what that means?
I don't know if I have the exact heights here. I know that it meets the height requirements as outlined in the plan development. I don't know if the applicant is here with the exact heights, but it is under the required height. So I think it's either at or below what the Mercury Building is.
And when you look at the Mercury Building, would that be, is, I can't remember the Mercury Building. Is it the same height on the front and on the riverside or does?
It's all one height.
So this building would be the same height when you look at it from an elevation perspective. But the height of the building would be higher looking from the river because the building goes lower.
So from Mercury Drive here, I'll, I will bring it up to the. So you're saying that it will appear taller from the Animus River Trail? Is that the?
Yeah, well, that was, that was a question asked at the time and I'm just trying to remember what the, what the end result was. If you look, if you would be on the river, you see the Mercury Building and it's, let's say, whatever, three stories high. The new building that they're proposing is going to be four stories high because it goes exactly, this is a good example. It goes way lower.
Mercury cuts down to like that?
Does it?
Yeah, so it cuts down. Yeah, I, you worked on it. I worked on that one.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so it steps down to the back steps down to the river just like that. And the first two are underground like levels. There's like a gym under there.
Okay. Yeah, in the end, I think if the planning commission reviewed it and supports it and it beats all the code requirements. Then I think it's great to see additional units added to our community.
Other questions?
There was an item in here about that it doesn't qualify for fair share. Is that because these are rental units or?
That's correct.
And it was mentioned that if they convert to condominiums, then they would have to meet the fair share.
Yes.
Is there any sense about what the rental rates on these units will be?
They will be above market rate just due to the cost of construction.
I really love the idea of the storage unit because we know how Durangans are. I think that was a really insightful addition. So thank you on that, Tracy. I am, I am a little bit, I, I understand that they were comparing it to the Mercury Building, but the Mercury Building's commercial. And this is residential and for me, it's a little sterile for residential. And so I'm just kind of, I wish that there had been a little bit more of an innovative imaginative look to it in some way, shape or form to take away from that commercial look of it for residents. So, and I'm glad that the traffic access is understood and taken care of. I don't understand the whole situation, but from the mall's point of view, but I think that's great. So yeah, more units, which is great. That's exactly what we need. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm excited for seventy-one new residential units. So I think that that's great. And I know that when we did Mercury, we built that access out to one sixty. So that way there. What is that? One sixty-five fifty? What is right there? I know, I'm like, what is the fault? I have no idea. Specifics of people didn't go through the mall. So it's right there and I'm confident that the mall will be pleased. But yeah, I think it looks, I think it's great. Thank you so much, Savannah.
I would make a motion to approve the River Trail Apartments Mixed Use Preliminary Plan Development at Mercury Village Lot four R A parcel five six six nine oh five one zero 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 four two. And Mercury Village Lot four R B parcel five six six nine oh five one zero 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 four three. With the findings and conditions as stated in the staff report and public comment as provided.
I'll second. Discussion. I would just like to say I'm thrilled at the idea of a new community being built in there and units coming in. And I hope that we see it as a real sense of place there. So and I think to thank the staff for working with the developer on this and the planning commission. Thank you. Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. So let's see, the next is a public hearing to consider the Animus Cliff Townhouse Townhouse Homes Preliminary, preliminary plan at seventeen hundred County Road two oh three. And Dan, I believe you're going to speak to this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Bear with me while I bring up the presentation. Yeah, thanks again, Dan Armitano with the Community Development Department. This is the Animus Cliff Townhomes Preliminary Plan Development. This is a fairly small scale residential development. Eight units proposed on a point seven acre parcel. This property is phase three of an existing planned development called the Animus Cliff Condominiums. Phases one and two of that development were a former Days Inn that was converted to condos through our PD process back in two thousand and seven. And as part of that approval process, phase three was basically allowed to be developed with up to eight units. So the developer is pursuing the maximum density in this case. Right now, the property is vacant. There was a fitness center on site that was scraped about a year ago in early twenty twenty-one. Here's a context map showing the property. This is the northernmost parcel in the city limits. It's outlined in red there. It's basically between County Road two oh three and Highway five fifty just north of where the divided portion of five fifty ends. And if you look a little bit more closely, again, here's the property in the north here. This aerial is kind of showing the entire Animus Cliff condos development with the two existing condominium buildings to the south. Basically, those phase one is the southernmost, phase two is the middle property, and then this is phase three, the vacant parcel to the north. I want to highlight here in this aerial that the access is off of County Road two oh three, not a city street. So it's a little bit unique for a development proposal in the city limits. And there are two accesses. There's a southern access here and a northern access. All three properties basically have an easement to use those three accesses, which obviously cross all three parcels. Just here's a couple of photos of the property. The larger one on the right here is taken from County Road two oh three, looking down towards the northern existing building that's phase two. And then the property to be developed is just kind of behind it to the north. And that's just a blown up image of the, the flat area which will be developed, these townhomes on the left. Just to go in a little bit more detail on what's proposed here. So again, eight townhome units compared with two identical fourplexes. As I mentioned, the access is already existing for the existing development there off of County Road two oh three. There are twenty total parking spaces provided, sixteen garage spaces, so two for each unit in the garage and then four guest spaces. That is exceeding the code requirement, which would be seventeen, which is wise in this case because there is no street parking for along County Road two oh three. There'll be new water and sewer main extensions to service units. And then, as I mentioned, no city right of way improvements because it is not adjacent to city right of way. However, there will be a requirement for the applicant to enter into an improvements agreement with La Plata County, a future road improvements agreement, really. For County Road two oh three, they're going to be doing a traffic study and submitting that to the county for their review and approval as part of the final review. Here's an updated site plan. There were some concerns that came up during planning commission's review of this project. Those concerns were related to circulation as well as the size of the wastewater detention facility and the resident amenity. So they have made some minor changes here. They've retained all four parking spaces. But this is the detention facility. The footprint of that has been reduced. And the amenity space has been moved kind of to a more central location, which is a benefit and which was one of staff's recommendations. They've also worked with the fire department to ensure that a fire truck can make this turn into the development as well as turn around using this hammerhead. This is showing the two fourplexes, of course, as well. Again, they're, they're virtually identical. One's oriented along the north property line, the other's along the east property line. And I guess we can take a look at the elevations for those. So again, these are townhomes, fairly typical design with garage space on the first floor and living spaces above. These do have decks which were discussed at some like during the planning commission hearing. There was some, some concern that the northern fourplex, the decks on the third floor would be overlooking to the neighboring property and would be a potential privacy concern. I think we've come to a pretty good compromise on that with the developer. They're going to include some, basically some privacy plating along the deck below the railing to help protect the privacy to the property of the north as well as for the occupants of these units as well. So. Process is laid out by the existing PD agreement. And that basically states that this proposal needs to go through the preliminary and final PD review. Planning commission reviewed the preliminary review and that's coming to you. That's why we're here tonight. The final PD review is going to be completed administratively. So you all will not see this again. If this is approved, the development will have its own HOA and CCNRs. There will be an addendum to the existing PD agreement that will be recorded. And then there will be a separate fair share agreement for this development as well. As far as alignment with adopted plans, this of course increases the inventory of for sale housing units within the city. They will need to meet the fair share ordinance requirements and they intend to pay the fee in lieu, which comes to a little over a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And then broadly, it meets the future land use designation from the comprehensive plan. That's mixed use. There isn't really a mixed use component to this. There was previously when the fitness center existed. But again, this is part of a already approved plan development. So this proposal does align with the development trajectory for the area. Just to touch briefly on some of the planning commission items and LEDC criteria. I sort of mentioned these earlier when we looked at the site plan, but access in the turning radio for DFPD was an item of concern as well as the size and location of that stormwater facility. Those have both been addressed with that new site plan. And then those third story decks obviously was discussed at length. And as I mentioned, I think we've come to a recent, reasonable compromise on that. Otherwise, the planning commission found that this proposal aligns with the LEDC criteria for preliminary PD. And they did recommend approval with the conditions that I have attached with the agenda documentation on a five to zero vote. Public comment, there have been a few that have come in really last few business days. There's nothing prior to that. But yeah, two different Animus Close condo owners commented on this project. Their concerns generally are, will this development have a separate HOA? Yes, it will. Vacation rentals should be prohibited. Yes, they will be. There was some discussion during the planning commission meeting about parking and possibly allowing for parking for phase three on phase one and two property. That is not something that is really viable and not something that the developers proposing at this point in time. So that's not something that's really in play. This last one, I think, is a valid concern and I think does warrant an additional condition of approval. The construction of phase three of these units would require use of the existing access drive. And if there's any potential damage that occurs as part of that construction, there will be a need for the developer to essentially address those damages. So the person that submitted this comment requested there be a conditions assessment for the access drive that the developer complete before beginning construction, just to have that in place in case anything happens, just to clarify whose responsibility it is. So just to conclude, the applicant has addressed concerns described during the planning commission's hearing. Proposal does align with adopted plans in the LEDC. And in addition to the recommended conditions of approval that were submitted with the agenda documentation, I am recommending the following condition be added, which is, and I'll just read it for the record. Prior to the approval of the final PD plan, the applicant must provide a conditions assessment of the existing access drive that has been accepted by both the developer and the Animus Cliff condominiums HOA. That's all I have for you. I've got a motion on screen, but.
Thank you, Dan. You keep that up there, please. So at this point, I will open a public hearing on the Animus Cliff Townhouse Townhomes Preliminary Plan. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Christine Gwynn, please come on up.
Do you want my name and social security number?
No, that's not necessary.
Just name? Okay, Christine. Okay, Christine Gwynne, I am a city resident. I live in phase two of Animus Cliffs, and I'm really grateful Dan included that condition of approval regarding the, what is it called, conditions assessment prior to any activity being conducted relative to, first off, removing or excavating the property to remove the public sized concrete swimming pool that's under the surface there. So that, in addition to the new construction, there's going to be, I would think, plenty of activity. And to have this conditions assessment by a civil engineer, Dan, or I didn't see. That would be my suggestion. I assume the developer has an engineer on staff now, and that that would seem like an appropriate task for an engineer to do this conditions assessment. We only have some hairline fractures on the parking lot now, and it would be just great to document it all and have video, I mean, photos taken so that at the end of all the construction and removal of the swimming pool, there's, there won't be a argument. We'll know, we're more likely to not have any controversy over that. So that was my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Is there anyone online who wishes to comment?
There is, Mayor. We have a Brett Pugsley. Brett, I'm going to unmute you, and if you could state whether or not you are a city resident, we'll put three minutes on the clock.
Yes, I am a city resident. I live in phase one in A106. And my, my concerns were pretty much taken care of with his answer about what's going to happen with the parking on a permanent basis. I, I do have a question in regards to the construction and where all those people are going to be parking.
Thank you. Dan, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I'd probably actually defer that one to the applicant. We do have, I believe, Brandon Carver should be with us on Zoom, so he may be able to answer that question. That's not something that's come up for staff yet.
Sorry, Dan, who are you looking for?
Brandon Carver, I believe, should be with us.
I see a Brandon Haley.
Okay, that could be him.
Brandon, you've been unmuted.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Brandon, you heard the question?
Yeah. Hi, thanks for your question. Yeah, I'm the contractor on this project, and I guess to answer both questions. Of the.
Brandon, we've lost you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so we'll provide an assessment with some photo documentation of the current conditions. I just reviewed the easement deed that is the agreement between us and the Animus Cliffs phase one and two. And it's kind of a reciprocal easement. The driveway that comes down is on our property, and then we do a U-turn kind of through your property. And so just to make you guys feel better, we have an equal incentive to keep the driveways in good condition. And we are happy to do what we can to make sure that happens. And we will be paving our own parking lot, and if anything does happen, it should be, we'll be very capable of solving any issues. So as far as the parking goes, that's a good question. And, you know, most of the time, we, we monitor the, the volume of contractors on site and try not to put too many people on at the same time for a lot of different reasons. One of them is parking and safety and all sorts of stuff. I think we'll have, we'll be building the buildings one at a time. And I, I think we can park most, for the most part, on the property. Now, if there, yeah. You know, occasionally, it may make sense to park on, in your parking lot, but it wouldn't be, you know, a truck full of tools or something. I would imagine it would be more of a a layman coming to visit or something like that. And, you know, if that issue, you're happy to discuss that.
I'm kind of worried about cranes and other, you know, very large vehicles is more than. That's my main concern. I don't want to see them in my parking lot. That's all.
Got it. Yeah, we'll make sure not to put any large, yeah, heavy equipment or anything like that in your parking lot. No problem.
Other, other comments? From the public? Hearing none. I will close this portion of the public hearing and open it for counsel or if the developer needs to make a presentation or wants to wait.
I think he's just available really for questions.
Okay, great. Counsel, questions?
So there were some concerns I noticed in the public comments about CCNR and HOA compatibility between the two projects. And I'm wondering about landscaping maintenance, building maintenance. If, you know, you would be ashamed if one of them was significantly different than the other as far as the quality that they had to maintain. Is there any conversation about that?
It's a good point. There hasn't really been any conversation about working together between the two HOAs. Really, they're completely separate. So that's my understanding of how they're.
So that wasn't really my question. It was just whether or not there was an, an understanding of the, the other HOA's agreements and if theirs would be compatible, not that they would be working together on them, but that they wouldn't be significantly different that might create some issues between these two developments.
Yeah, I haven't reviewed the existing HOA documents and compared them, compared them to the new HOA documents. So I don't know if I can give you a really great answer on that.
It just might be a good idea if the developer considered that when they take that into consideration. I also, I didn't see a vegetation plan, and maybe that comes in the next phase of planning?
There was a landscape plan. I apologize. That was not included with the documentation. Yeah, they did have a landscape plan that was submitted that was reviewed.
So will there be landscaping on the highway side of the road? Will there be landscaping in between the buildings? Will there be landscaping along the drives in the parking lot? What does that look like?
Yeah, it will. The landscaping plan was reviewed and then determined to comply with LUDC standards. So there will be some screening along. I'm trying to picture it in my mind. There's certainly some screening, some landscaping in the parking lot. I believe there's some on the County Road 203 side. The setback to the eastern property line, which is where the highway is, is fairly limited. So I don't know if there's a whole lot back there. So.
Okay, well, I'm excited about more housing in our community. Thank you to the developer and everyone else.
Other questions?
I do have some questions. As stated earlier, under potential conflict of interest, I do, I originally thought that it might be the same developer, and I would have a financial potential conflict, but because they are separate, I am a neighbor. And so I'm raising questions as a neighbor and as a city counselor. So my first question on parking is, how many ADA spaces will be allocated of those 20 parking spaces? And is it, does it exceed the expectation?
Yeah, I believe there's one shown, and that does exceed the expectation.
Okay. My other question is, when the developer said that they will park on the other HOA's property, is that property not owned by that HOA? And would they not need express permission for any of their contractors to park on private property?
That would be my understanding, yes.
So I think that needs to be clear to the developer who said that we'll, we won't park any big trucks on the property. It is private property, and as such, needs to be respected as such.
Yes, that's a good point, and that has not come up up until now, but yes, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. I don't know if that requires a condition or not, or if it could be understood, or if it, when it comes back to us, it will be clear.
It should be implied, but I think this discussion certainly, if you'd like to include as a condition of approval, it's totally fine, appropriate, so.
It does not come back to us. I might suggest, oh, I have one more question, and that is regarding noise. Because many of the people in this HOA community, and there are 47 different units, are retired or they work from home. And I'm wondering, I know that there's going to be noise associated with it. What would be the ways of addressing that? Should it be excessive, particularly during the daytime, when people might be trying to work from home, from their home?
That's a good question. Obviously, the city has a noise ordinance, and there are hours of the day where that, I believe, those loud decibel levels can be a certain number. Whereas after hours that are below that, I think that just is essentially based on, you know, when construction can occur during the day. So this construction project would need to comply with that. As far as enforcing it, I know that that's always something that's a little bit tricky. So it'd be a complaint based system, and then I imagine we have to have code enforcement go out with noise meters and take measurements and make determinations from there. You know, I think the best thing we can do upfront is just ensure that the developer is aware of those requirements and try to be as best of neighbors as they possibly can with the understanding of that, yes, it's a construction project, and there will be some noise generated, so. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
Thank you. No, I, I think it's about, you know, being reasonable. The question, without making not parking onsite a condition of this, if parking does take place onsite, what are the neighbors' options for addressing? Because the neighbors have two parking spaces assigned per unit, and often it is crowded and used.
Maybe defer some of these questions to Derek, but I would be.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, is there a question about another, we've closed the public comment. I'll reopen the, the hearing. Well, I know you're on the HOA board, and so I will, will, in the spirit of trying to get this resolved amicably in any, and pre, and prevent issues while also welcoming new development in our neigh, in the neighborhood. Please come to, to the microphone, state your name, and if you are a city or county resident.
I'm Joyce Boyer. I am an owner resident at Animus Cliffs condominiums, and I am on the board, the HOA board. My, my concern is when you look at the plat, I know it's, it's really going to be tight for people. But there is a large waste bin, which is about 20 feet from our front door. So when we come out of the building, we'll be right there. We also have a large waste bin, probably 50 feet to the left. And I, I'm hoping that perhaps we can coordinate that and share a waste bin instead of putting an extra one right in front of the building. I don't know when to raise that question, but thank you for letting me do that.
I appreciate that. I'm going to actually look to Dan to see if he can answer those questions. In the spirit of welcoming neighbors, are there opportunities to address those items as they come up?
I would say that would be a good question for the applicant, and, you know, I would imagine that'd be something that they would consider. You know, that's, it's a valid point. There are two dumpsters that would be relatively close to one another. So if those could be consolidated, that seems like that would be possibly a reasonable idea. You know, there's certainly, with trash, it's always something that can become tricky as well in terms of, you know, their separate HOAs. If an issue does arise, cleaning that up can be potentially messy. So I'm not really sure if, yeah, not really sure if it would be workable or not, but it's worth, it's worth asking the question.
Great, thank you. On that note, I will close the public hearing and see, oh, excuse me, I've already done that. I'm, we, I'm going to, no, actually, I'm going to close it because I opened it up again. In the spirit of being open but not having this continue ad infinitum, I have another hand open. So Christine, I would welcome a two minute addition to your previous comments. You would need to come to the, no, it needs to speak, you would need to speak into the microphone.
Again, Christine Gwynne, thank you very much. I agree with Joyce that the, on the site plan, phase three's garbage dumpster is in a, you know, it's not a great place for us because we look at it as we come out the door. However, I think sharing a dumpster is a terrible idea. These are separate parcels, separate projects, separate everything except for the shared access. And I think the more things that attempted, that we attempt to share, the more problematic and more issues arise. So I would just urge the applicant, the developer, to see if a new location for the dumpster on his property could be found. That's just my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's great to see community members being able to disagree with one another. On that note, on that note, I will close this portion of the reopened public hearing. Counsel, any other comments before, or is there a motion?
I would like to suggest that the public comments we received today, which included the comment about the dumpsters, make their way to the planning commission and through staff prior to the next review.
So this will not go back to planning commission. I'll just go to staff. I will say on the dumpster piece, there are screening requirements for dumpsters that will be in play with this development. So the dumpster will be screened. It won't just be out in the, out in the open for, to see. So, but yes, this, this is the preliminary review, so the next stage is the final review, which is done administratively if council approves this proposal this evening.
Okay, great. And then I, having given that, I would move to recommend approval of the proposed Animus Cliffs Town Homes preliminary development plan with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing.
I'll second. Discussion. I would like to say that we have not, I have not requested that it formally be a condition that the, there will be no parking on the private part, HOA, the HOA's private land, but it has been raised in this meeting, and staff is aware of that concern.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Introduction of ordinances. An ordinance authorizing a ground lease with Asher Aviation, wait, excuse me, we have to take these all separately, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, no problem. An ordinance authorizing a ground lease with Asher Aviation LLC for airport hangar E4 at the airport and declaring an effective date.
Yes, and this would be ordinance 2022-20. And yes, they do need to be separately adopted because there are separate parcels of property. So these, obviously, were just subject to a hearing. I won't repeat myself, so this will be 2021 and 22. These are, those three ordinances before you for first reading tonight. We'd do a separate motion on each of them.
Are there any questions of the city attorney or of Daniel? No, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance dash, or 2022-20.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Yes. Item 12.2.
Item twelve point two. An ordinance authorizing a ground lease with Asher Aviation Group LLC for airport hangar E5 at the airport and declaring an effective date. This is twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Any questions? Can we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one.
All seconds.
Any discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Item twelve point three. An ordinance authorizing a ground lease with Asher Aviation Group LLC for airport hangar E6 at the airport and declaring an effective date. This is item twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I will move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Then we have the vote.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Item twelve point four. An ordinance approving annexation and initial zoning for the Highway Three Third Edition to the City of Durango and declaring an effective date. Any questions for the city attorney? Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Now we move on to council reports. Oh wait, there's no general business items, nothing's been added. Council reports and actions. Each council member is provided an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and to discuss topics not otherwise appearing on the agenda. Is there a council that would like to go first, please? We have the meetings that have taken place would be the Library Advisory Board that was taking place on June eighth, Parks and Rec on June eighth, Natural Lands on June thirteenth, and the Multimodal Advisory Board on June fifteenth. Any reports from those liaisons?
Well, I attended both the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board meeting and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting as Lee, Counselor Bosmans was out of town. So for the Natural Lands Board, we had a couple of interesting discussions. There was an update on the property at four oh two County Road two thirty-eight, which is a piece of property that the city is in negotiations with for purchasing up on the Mesa by Horse Gulch where power line comes through. And we're looking at the half of the, we've made an offer on half of the property. And the request from the owner was to move the trail onto the actual easement that goes across there so that, or at least off the property that we aren't buying, so that it's on the property that we are buying. And so they just got an update on how that was working. Interestingly enough, and I'm, I'm not proposing this, but interestingly enough, the conversation came up about the other half of that piece of property possibly being suitable as a homeless camp. And that's one I haven't mentioned to you yet. So that's something we might want to look at. The, was originally, I think one point four million for the entire piece of property and when we negotiated to split it in half, that reduced the cost that we are currently negotiating on to about four hundred thousand, so it might be something worth looking at. The other thing is that the Natural Lands Board will be doing a Durango Mesa part tour and I absolutely forgot what date that would be, but I'm sure council would be invited if anyone would like to go. Maura Compton will be leading that. And then the other interesting one was a community member had made a comment that we have some issues. We have a community that has tons and tons of dogs and, and many of us would like more off-leash areas for our dogs and that sometimes in our open spaces, there are challenges there. So how could we address that? And one of the comments that came up was being able to designate certain open space areas as dog off-leash areas. And then the other comment that came up was a caveat that maybe a program like the Boulder Blue Tag that proves that the dog has recall skills and all of that before they're allowed to be off-leash. So the Natural Lands Board will be putting that on a future agenda to discuss, how do we address this? Do we address it, that type of thing? We've, we are all fully aware that we only have one off-leash dog park in the city and basically you have to drive there, so it doesn't really work for our communities. And I think that that's what puts a lot of the pressure on people wanting to move their animals, their dogs off-leash in the open space because they don't have any place else to have their dogs off-leash. And so when I went to the Parks and Rec Board meeting, of course, I mentioned that too, that they might want to consider identifying some other areas for off-leash in the parks so that it would be, you know, fenced and all of that. So it might take some of the pressure off our open space that way. The other thing that, the other Parks and Rec Board meeting, couple of concerns and a couple, well, one concern and one really interesting idea. So we all know that we've been working on where do we put pickleball and the Parks and Rec Board, the staff have come up with some, a couple of alternative locations, the Smith Fields and one of the most promising and the one that the board really supported was having the pickleball courts in Schneider Park. They're downtown, they're easily accessible, it's a fairly underutilized area of land and it had been looked at previously for the possibility of being the sand volleyball courts when Santa Rita eliminated those until we got them rebuilt there. So exciting, it's an exciting option. It has good parking, there's parking all along, up and down, there's parking in the parking lots there. Plus there's bike access through the Animus River Trail. And there's no direct residence, so the sound of the pickleball that a lot of people complain about wouldn't be a, a problem, probably. So that's, that's something that we may see in the future. The other one that was interesting was they were talking about capital improvement project prioritizations and there was a huge concern on the part of the Parks and Rec Board that the multimodal board had not included the Camino Crossing as one of their CIP project recommendations for this upcoming budget process. And it appears that because, well, I don't know if it's because of it or not, but an impact on that, on that decision had to do with the Town Plaza Group not wanting to give access for surveys to the Town Plaza property for the Camino Crossing. And that the board somehow thought it should be put on hold while that decision happened and therefore wasn't going to put it on their CIP priority list. However, instead, they put a signalized crossing at Eleventh Street on their CIP project list. And there's a, some significant issues with that. One is that that's a private street, first of all, and at this point in time, according to staff, we don't, we're not making headway on making that not a private street. So I'm not certain how that would work. And the Parks and Rec Board was very, very concerned about about eliminating a project that we've spent money on studying and that has been a concern for our community for years and has complete support of the community. So I've asked city manager to talk with Sarah, the transportation director, so we can get, and I've asked Sarah, I think there needs to be some more conversation about how this is happening and why, and I'm also wondering if possibly council might want to give some direction or some suggestion here about prioritization. So that's, that was, the Parks and Rec Board was completely mystified as to how this occurred, given that it's on the Parks and Rec Board priority list, so.
I'll open up for comments. I, I also will recognize that this is new information for people, so we may need time to process that. And I'd also like to say, when do we anticipating seeing the, if I've missed it, please forgive me, the projected integrated five-year plan for the twenty fifteen sales tax. And Tori's not here, I know that.
See if Devin will get that. Yeah, so Tori's not here and then I think Sarah may be online. She actually just messaged me, she actually is COVID positive, so she's virtual, so I haven't had a chance to talk with her, but definitely get into that and Devin, I'm not sure if you have an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So Mayor and Council Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. So we have been working with the departments and we have most of their CIP projects submitted to us as of Friday. And so we will be looking to provide the five-year plan, I believe, at the July nineteenth study session as part of that forecasting. So we still have to work with the departments to fine tune some of that information, but we have the forecast for what we're expecting with the sales tax. And then from there, we'll work with the departments and finance folks to make sure we're set, so.
Comments from council on that?
If you, Sarah just told me she is actually on here and I don't know if Tom, you can have her, put her as a panel so she can speak on some of these update items.
And if I may, at the last meeting, and I think Counselor Bosmans and Counselor Youssef, you weren't here, but I actually raised the question of how are we thinking about all of these items because we know we have, the last time I looked, the Camino Crossing was a four million plus proposed project and with the significant increase in costs, are we looking at six million and where does that fit on this? On the schedule, because in previous years, it had been kind of coming up now. And so I will say this is news to learn, but I think there's, you can always find a solution and it's not about, we all, things happen, but it's how to address it going forward and the council having an opportunity to think about it and provide direction at an appropriate setting.
Sarah, are you there?
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. I do have COVID, so my voice is a little raspy. So at the Wednesday meeting, MAP did adopt their five-year CIP plan and you're correct, the Camino was not one of their priorities. But we will be, the next step in the CIP process is to schedule a joint CIP subcommittee between the chairs of MAP and Parks and Rec to discuss that and there has not been a fully adopted five-year CIP recommendation made yet for both boards.
So I was going to ask Counsel Bosman, if you had, as the liaison, you had anything?
Well, I think my, yeah, camera's on the speaker. I think I want to just make an observation that as a liaison, it seems that there was quite some active participation on whether it's pickleball court location or dog park or the way they prioritize their projects. I would to keep these ports objective without steering from my side at least and hopefully not from other counselors, so that we all, five of us get their recommendations for projects and then that we evaluate what they recommend and make the final decision. So at this point, I, I, I will give you the update on multimodal whenever you're ready, but, and on top of it, I'm not ready to discuss Camino project.
So let's hear the update from multimodal.
If I may respond to that, though, I, I didn't give any guidance on Camino Crossing or, nor did I give any guidance on pickleball locations. And the only information that I provided to the Natural Lands Board regarding open space and off-leash dogs was what was communicated to me by community members. So I am just expressing the board's position on both those items.
Thank you for that clarification. An update on the multimodal advisory board meeting?
Yeah, the multimodal board meeting took place on June fifteenth. There was the presentation and discussion on the Camino Crossing project. And the majority of time was going over the different projects for the prioritization, some of the details of it and how they rank it individually and then together, combined with the staff recommendations. And that's going to come to us hopefully in the near future. And there was a discussion on the joint discussion from the chair and the co-chair, I believe, between multimodal as well as Parks and Rec. And that's all I have for that board meeting.
Very good. And did anyone attend any other meetings? And I will end, end with one that I participated in, but any other meetings or updates?
I had one, just, just very quick, very brief update on CML. So we'll have, we're, several of us are attending the CML conference, so we'll have a lot more information after that. But, you know, the legislative session has ended and they had, it's just a couple really interesting new laws that we may want to discuss at some point. First of all, they have a free public transit to combat, combat high ozone days and they're looking at at least three day, thirty days of free public transit. And I, throughout, throughout the Regional Transportation District, I just thought that was interesting. And I, I liked, I liked the approach that they did that on that. They had another bill that is an effort to rise or slow the rising residential and commercial property tax, taxes and they capped how much a property's value can be used in determining property taxes for the next two years. And the officials estimate that it will save the owner of a residential home for five hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred and seventy-four dollars a year. An owner of a five hundred thousand dollar commercial property, about twelve hundred dollars a year. Interestingly enough, there is no more say, state sales tax for tampons and diapers. We had that discussion as a city, so I wanted to make sure I followed up with us on that and not quite sure where we left that discussion. Tampons. Yep. And I, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do things, I guess, right? You know, I'm not sure what gets through at different levels. So, and also the interesting one, I forget what they call it, but the bikes can roll through intersections when they're clear. So they, bicycle riders can now treat stop signs like yield signs and stoplights like stop signs. And so after yielding to ride away traffic. So it's interesting with all of our bikers in town. Don't expect them to come to a hard stop all the time. And there's many, many more and we'll, I'll, I'll keep you updated, but I just wanted to give those brief updates.
Thank you. And I also was able to attend the Alliance for Economic Development meeting for the shareholders, stakeholders. They had asked that the mayor participate just to get a bit of my vision. Unfortunately, it did run pretty late because we talked about housing from a variety of perspectives. And we started with, why is housing so important to the alliance? And it all comes down to, it's hard to attract businesses and keep them if we people don't have any place to live. Then we actually heard from the superintendent of the school district who talked about how we're losing a whole middle section of youth because their parents can't find a place to really live and they're leaving town. And then how that affects our ability to plan for different classrooms and the ability to attract math teachers. Because they'll get hired and then, then there's no place for them, them to live. And the way to see the interconnection with that, we then, I then met with Tom Stridikis, the president of FLC, wanting to talk to him about how housing was impacting him. And he said, well, you know, obviously just getting people here to teach, but if I have teachers and their children don't have math, high school math teachers, it becomes a problem. So the issue of housing is on so many people's mind. I want to recognize the work that we're making, that we're seeing. We also talked about, and Jen Lopez actually used her term, the pipeline with quotes, because what goes into the pipeline doesn't necessarily come out. She provided a summary of the investment strategy that would be necessary. I believe Eva Hansen has put that up on the website of what is going to be needed and we will be looking to staff to provide some discussion around that topic. So it was an hour and a half, normally an hour meeting, but an hour and a half focused on the housing inventory kind of crisis, if you will, but with a, a recognized commitment from the business community and the academic leadership that this is a problem we are all facing. So, thank you. Anything else? Then on that note, let's adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.